Okay. Hi, Melissa. Can you hear us?
Hi. Yes, I can hear you. Sorry, I'm driving, so I'll just be.
Okay. Um, we're gonna call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the capital improvement plan committee, and it is 7:05 PM. And the first item is present to speak. I don't, can't see that.
No, it's you and me.
Just Melissa.
Just Melissa.
So I don't think we have anyone from the public here to make a statement, so we can move on. Um, to approval of minutes, and we have three sets of minutes from the fall when we did tours of all the facilities that we did. So the first one is October 3rd. That's when we went to the fire department. Well, Wellington 1. We went to both of those, those places. You were there.
Yep.
Yep, and then on October 25th, we went to the library. And then on November 1st, we went here and to Wellington Health Department. So, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion?
Oh, I'll, I'll move that we accept the, the minutes of those three meetings. I don't know what the dates are right off my head, off my head, but I'll move the three meetings.
Okay.
Can we do all three at once, or do we have?
Yeah, I think so.
Alright, good.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion about them?
Moving forward, we have a recording secretary.
Yes. Yes, we do, we do, and these.
These are just tours.
These are just tours. We didn't have any, we didn't make any votes or anything, so it wasn't terribly important. But, um, okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Alright.
Melissa, did you have a chance?
Oh, yeah. So you're good?
I, I approve.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um, election of chair. Um, I guess we do this every year. Anybody?
I nominate Christine.
Thank you. Anybody else want to nominate?
Please.
Have fun. Have fun.
What was the question? Yeah, I know, that's why I'm not saying it.
Alright, no other nominations? Um, alright, I guess I'll move to Beau.
Hi.
All in favor?
Right, yes.
Hi.
Want to pose? Doesn't sound like it. Alright, well, I will, I'll do this one more year.
Excellent.
Um, alright, the meeting calendar. So, I just put some dates down, which are basically every Wednesday at 7 o'clock. But we know a few things now about schedules, which is that there are some other meetings on Wednesdays. And the Board of Ed in particular is having other budget workshops on Wednesdays. Um, that's why Jen can't be here. Um, but at the same time, we, we have a deadline, and our deadline is... Alright, well, then, the big, the big number that we get to goes into your budget, which you are presenting on the 29th to the Board of Finance of February.
Oh, I was hoping, you know, at least until February.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
January.
Yeah, 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 no, February 29th. So ideally, we are done by then.
Okay.
Um, that doesn't always happen.
Right.
And it, sometimes we go back and forth.
Yeah, year one at least has to get done by then.
Yeah, yeah, so...
So how many meetings do we need between now and that?
Um, usually we do it in five, like five, we're having presenters.
We used to have a snow day, but that doesn't seem to apply anymore.
No, no.
This one's likely going to come with the timing of the school.
Yeah.
There, I know they're preparing quite a bit, and there's quite a lot.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and actually, what I was gonna do is, um, look at the town website, at the calendar, because, um... Because maybe there's, there's another day of the week that works for everybody that would be better for all of us. Also, we, we did, last year, we ended up having some meetings in the afternoon on Fridays. I don't know why, it just worked for everybody who was on the, on the board, but didn't, I don't think it was great for the public participation part. Um, but we had to, because we just couldn't, couldn't get everybody together in the same place.
Friday's the one day that nobody meets, so if you had it, like, late afternoon, like, 3 or 4?
Yeah.
That would be a deal for me, I think.
Okay.
But it, it, I guess every... I've already started running into meetings that are coinciding with each other, so.
Yeah, it's, it's hard. Um... Oh, I saw, I looked at this, at the website earlier, and I could see all the, I verlinked when all the meetings were. I don't see it now.
I, I, I do see them.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh...
Where, where is there no meetings?
Good luck with that. Uh, let's see here. It looks like, on the calendars, the Board of Ed can't... What did they meet? Did they meet last night?
Yes.
Yeah, so you have a meeting on the 16th because of the Monday holiday on the Board of.
Yeah, except that that one may end up getting canceled, because I think both my selectmen are, are missing, and I won't have a form. I can't find Andy right now.
Can't find him?
I can't find him. I've been looking for him for two days, trying to contact him. He may be in Thailand.
Oh.
Alright.
The cell service may be spotty.
They're not gonna find him.
Um, yeah, I mean, there's planning and zoning on Tuesday, the 16th. They have a meeting. Um, 23rd is open, 30th is open, those are Tuesdays. In January, can I get to February?
Yeah.
Not easily, hold on. Let's see here. Alright. Next. February. Board of Ed on the 13th, and planning zoning on Tuesdays, that's your best bet, Fridays are wide open. Um, Wednesdays are library, Board of Directors in February.
Mm-hmm.
Tuesdays and Wednesday nights, so your best bet is gonna be thanks.
Yeah, there's always.
There's always thanks, so.
Um, and then, I, so, the Board of Ed, their, their regular meetings are on Tuesday, but I think their budget planning workshops are Wednesdays.
Those aren't showing on here, so.
Yeah. Um, and the library, I saw they, they meet, they're meeting twice this month. I don't know why.
10th tonight, 24th, and twice next month, too.
Okay, so it seems like they're on a regular schedule. But they, they could potentially come on a Wednesday that's not when they have a meeting, so. So ne- so next week, maybe the library. We could invite them to come.
They invite the Donna set out, they requested to the 16th to have them come back.
Yep. So, and, um, people are making submissions, because I get an email every time they do. And it's, so there's a lot. Um, I know Brenda was busy today putting in all the Board of Ed stuff, so. Uh, so what's, what's great now is it's all like, it's like a form that people are filling out online. So we can download that form into an Excel spreadsheet and have it all in one place when, when it's done. Um, which will make it a little bit easier, because usually what I like to do at the first meeting is just show you the whole list of what all the things are, and when people think they want the things, which years, and see what the totals are. And then, and then after we get over the sticker shock, we go backwards a little bit. Um, we try to figure out what numbers we're trying to get to, and how we could possibly get there, so. Um, so yeah, so that, we should on the 17th, if we need again next Wednesday, have, have that to look at. And all the printouts, all the PDFs of all the requests, so.
One of those two?
The, on Tuesday, the 16th. Yeah, you have to get some.
I have to get some midnight. I have, how, um, that list typically get shared or passed around?
Um, typically, uh...
Or how is it consolidated, I guess, is that?
Well, I, I know in years past, when it was just like literally that people would have like a, a, a printout thing that we just photocopy, but now that we have this automated way, it creates PDFs of each one. So I was thinking I would make a PDF and just send it to you all, except now I see that there's like 50 or 60 of them.
Yeah.
That's too many, I think.
It's gonna be one line.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm not sure. If we have them printed, and everybody just gets a packet to work with that, I mean, that is useful to have, so.
It would be helpful.
We want them at supporting documentation from vendor JCOs, stuff like that, and that's good.
Yeah.
So it isn't just like, are two pieces of paper?
Oh, yeah, it ends up being a stack. But it is a good, it, I think for this reason, for this purpose, it is good to have the printouts, because, um, we, we'll end up going back to it, you know, reading the stuff, and we need more detail, so. So anyway, maybe we'll try to get the library here next week. But otherwise, um, you know, we have to approve a, a, a schedule, so maybe we stick with the Wednesdays.
Alright.
If that works.
That'll work.
And then we'll have some special meetings, maybe as time goes on, where, um, just so that like, if, if it is the Board of Ed meeting at the same exact time, maybe we could meet earlier or something like that. Um, just so that they would be able to come, because we do need the Board of Ed to come and present to us, too. So, not sure when, when that would be, so.
Yeah, they have nothing on their calendar for Wednesdays, so.
Okay.
On the town calendar, I agree.
Okay. So does somebody want to make a motion to approve this?
They have a motion to approve, uh, the, uh, proposed schedule.
Okay.
Second.
Alright.
Sure, I have some meeting on Valentine's Day.
Oh.
That's alright. We're at my house.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't think I was supposed to say that. That's alright, I, I'll notice for the record that I, I made the point.
Yeah, yeah.
So you can blame it on us, buddy. I'm sorry, honey. The 21st is my birthday, that's more important than Valentine's Day. Not to my wife.
Um, okay, so, reviewing?
I think we gotta run to approve that, though.
Oh, yeah, sorry. All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Hi. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Alright, let's see if I can share my screen. Let me zoom. I'm there. Share screen. Okay. Okay. Alright, so this is our plan from last year. Um, you all know. Does everybody remember what we did last year? Remember the million dollar, um, shock absorber plan? Yep, that's in here.
Alright.
Um... So let's see, Public Works, the CIP plan includes the purchase of a street sweeper, which they did do.
Uh, yeah, we, that goes to town meeting the 23rd of this month.
I was going 30,000, or?
Uh, no, it was like 60, 70, yeah. Uh, we, I readjusted that, but, because, uh, we had NIPS money.
Oh, right, the NIPS money.
That, like, $5,000 that we couldn't spend on anything but street sweepers, so I spent it on the street sweeper. And then that put $5,000 back into general.
What was that, what did CIP do for that?
Um, oh, no, but not. Um... Your one? Um, $100,000. So there's a big savings there.
There's a big savings there, yeah.
Yeah.
Better than the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that one actually was coming out of like, capital reserve fund. So... Um, you know, did Donna put the money back in capital reserve or in general?
I don't know. Probably gonna wait for the town meeting, go make the plans.
Yeah.
Go Mr. L.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I don't remember, but, um... So that's good. And then Troy told me today, he wasn't aware of the other thing that got approved for this year, which is the, um, the overhead doors for the, the garage.
I thought they did, uh...
No, and when we were on the tour, he was talking about how.
About getting them.
Yeah, so he said that, um, he thought it was in year two for some reason, so now that he knows, he's gonna get on it.
Alright.
Um, so, so we, we won't have to worry about that going forward, and planning for that spending, because we already did.
Just to let you know, uh, the Department of Bank came in and inspected the dog pound. We are way out of compliance. We are screwed on that.
Were you talking to your dog pound?
Yes. They changed, they changed the, uh...
For the dogs.
Oh.
They changed the dimensions of everything, and they won't grandfather us.
Why?
I don't know. I, the guy wants to meet with me, and he sent me three emails before he found my right email, so I got it after 4 o'clock this afternoon. So I gotta meet with him and find out what's wrong with that.
Okay.
Well, to start with, the roofs and gutters, um, and the dog runs are too small. And there's something else, I don't know.
Yeah, there's, and there's always.
AC and heat.
Right.
AC and heat.
Oh, yeah, oh, I think it has heat, but it doesn't have AC, and it needs AC in the summer.
Yeah, there, there's usually a backup of sewage, too.
Yes, and I'm talking to, um, Pollak about regionalizing and using their pound.
Mm-hmm, and they always wanted to use our pound.
Yeah, I think they got into pound, and, and they've got three ACOs now or something.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, and we, we're sharing one with three other towns.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, there's an issue.
Yep. Um, alright, well, that is not on the plan.
Yeah.
So that'll, that'll be a new addition. Um, the salt shed project that was funded by STEEP. Um... But I don't know where that is, do you know?
I don't know where that is either. I, I don't think they have it.
No, no, so to, to give you a little history on that, this is back, go over seven years ago, when I was here. Um, we had, we got, we came in under budget on the Turnpike Road project, like, $150,000. So, uh, we asked at the time for the state to reallocate that money to the salt shed, because at that point, we were told that, um, the salt shed shouldn't be where it is, uh, because it runs right down to the river. So, and, uh, oh, that's also starting to fall apart. Um, so, then, so then Carl drew up plans for a salt shed, and at, and then they ended up changing it from being under DOT to being under a different department. And then Erica was trying to track it down, and we still don't have a salt shed. And we still have that money, it's out there, so, sorry.
Because I believe before COVID, it was a fairly simple process to reallocate the money. Said, oh, you have it in that project, get some over, you know, put something right in here, you're done. And Erica has been trying for several years to get that out of them. Has the STEEP money come in for the septic system for Old Town Hall?
I believe it has. I, I, I won't guarantee you that, but I believe it has, and Troy was talking about actually starting the project in March or April, and he has, he has a plan.
So in that longer history of the Public Works area, there were some very large plans to move things around, and one of them was cutting into the hillside with over $100,000 in site prep costs just to move dirt. Um... This was under some previous directors, I believe. And, and the whole project, I think, was 750 or something like that, and this is places from 5, 10 years ago, whatever they started that.
10 years ago.
Um, uh, the discussion within CIP the last few years has been, if you get that STEEP money, can you go to Salt Shed with that STEEP money? Yes, I know you have big plans, but if you just needed a salt shed, can you afford that with STEEP money? Answer, I got yes. Um, and so I think that's the way we kind of left it, is get the STEEP money, do what you can with it, and, uh, this predates putting it in the fuel tank, because you're moving the fuel tank to a different spot, the salt shed's going to a different spot. Uh, there were some really big plans up there.
Yeah, Carl, Carl drew up.
Yeah.
To the...
And he, maybe he drew what was requested at the time.
Yeah, um, I think it was because the state, the, um, DEP wanted the drainage to be a certain way. Didn't say he was taking all that into account, but.
Were we talking about the, what's the balance on, now was the balance on the speed that we're trying to roll over?
Um, it's, it was like $150,000, yeah. So, um, we, you'll find out.
Yeah, yeah, go find the money. Pete, Ted, you're it.
Um, so that was it for Public Works, and the other thing I would say about Public Works is that for the last six years, we have been trying to like, get to a point with the truck purchases, so that they're, we're not doing them all at the same time.
We just took, took, uh, delivery on one of them, like, last week, and two days later, it was broken down and lost.
One of the new ones?
The brand new one. It was two days old. Had an electrical problem and wouldn't start.
Okay.
Yeah, I was happy about that. You see the joy on my face.
Well...
Yeah, he said he didn't have anything, Jake, that had come out.
Yeah.
Two, you were two, if I remember correctly during the tour.
Yes, that's what he said, but then.
But then he submitted?
No, he hasn't submitted, I don't think, but the thing I want to make sure of is that we don't, that he's not pushing it out anymore, because then five years from now, we're gonna have to buy trucks all five years in a row again. And we don't want to do that, so. Um, and also, what other things are we gonna need to replace? Um, there's a lot of big equipment up there, so.
We talked casually at one of those things briefly about having, I don't know, fire departments and our Public Works, like, update a spreadsheet of all the equipment, anticipated lifespan, stuff like that. I know you've discussed that stuff. Do we have, uh, anything come in, just as a way of validating urgency of need, and?
No, but I will, I'll, I'll circle back with Troy and just let him know, um, that we're gonna be looking for that. Um...
It's as much work as we have to do, but a five-year plan really doesn't reflect or educate us on what needs to go on at the 10-year, 15-year, 20-year, and most of these are predictable.
Right.
That, uh, you know, tell the fire department, we got a grant from FEMA for an air compressor. At that time, it was $45,000, probably gonna be $90,000 by the time that. Uh, so lifespan on those is 20 years, maybe the longer if you can get parts for it.
Yeah, even the major vehicles, you're just having, I'm not first on fire apparatus.
But there's, you know, we're looking at stuff that we, uh, buy. Basically, it's over 10,000 bucks, and if we had to replace this, and we run into some of the SCBA breathing apparatus we've done for both departments. The hose we got on a FEMA grant, they generally don't give you the grant twice. First time was to bring you up this stuff, so that could be between the two departments, a hundred thousand bucks in hose. And, uh, unfortunately, it's in an FPA standard, it says after, oh, they want it after 10 years to get rid of it, um, even if it's testing perfectly good, but at some point, it needs, you know, to crack and fail, and, you know, that sort of thing. That's another hundred thousand bucks. There's a lot of things that have never appeared on the plan that, you know, maybe after budget season, we could approach that big list. And I'm sure there's similar lists, especially for Public Works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like boilers at the school, or ventilation, I mean, we'll see some of those, but those were a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it's just helpful for understanding that of the repetitive cycle, of just having to deal with the urgency as it comes up as a critical need, because it's been, you know, it, the more we can plan ahead for a lot of this, the...
Yeah.
The, like, even if it doesn't drop in the immediate five-year, we should at least have an understanding that on the outside five, there's $800,000 in need that, you know, you're gonna have to materialize from somewhere, or it's gonna be a bother.
Right. Yep. Um, so let's see, fire departments, Wellington Fire Department number one, this will be the last year of the lease on the self-contained breathing apparatus. Purchase of a new ambulance was approved for fiscal year '22, '23, the lease payment, and all the years of the plan.
So deputy, you know, the ambulance, um, if you quit following, especially trying to get a chassis on where you factor, you know, look at the project, get in a pickup truck for the Public Works Director. Um, ambulance chassis, if we're trying to order one and then take is, uh, one to two years to get just a chassis part of it. It could be anywhere from, uh, four months to a year to get a box built on the back of it, or a reused box that we had. Um, the last price that I got from, uh, the dealer that Mike McCulley recommended was, in very round figures, $410,000 per ambulance. If you don't get the new structure and power loader, you can get it down to about 400. That's his, today's price. We are still waiting one to two years to get the chassis. So that 300, um, probably won't happen, uh, because inflation is going up at, uh, you know, 10, 20% a year. It's not 3%, or 5%, or even 10. It's, uh, everything is just going up so fast, and, uh, and not knowing, you know, the hassle we had giving the Public Works Director his truck, was, you know, in essence, the impression I got is the dealer wanted to sell it as a private sale, because he can make a lot more money on it than what he agreed to understate contract price.
Yep.
Um, so the new ambulance is still a need, still needs to happen. Um, the only good news is we haven't spent any money the last couple of years on a lease. So, theory that's building up a little bit on 17 to, uh, accommodate whatever price it ends up being.
Hmm. Okay. Um, well, the other thing, the hydraulic rescue equipment.
That's on order. Um, it's supposedly in this month, that should have been a couple of weeks. By the end of the month is what we said, we'll appeal the storm.
Okay. Um, and then what we noted here was that future requests include, included in the plan include bonding for a firehouse addition project. So, um, with an asterisk, that that was in year three, I think we thought we might do a bond?
Yeah, there was engineering in here for this year and next year, and the bomb was year three.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, between firehouse issues and the school, we're basically reevaluating this entire platform.
Exactly.
Forward in all honesty.
Exactly.
Um...
So.
Well, one thing to note on those, I mean, what is, I, I know, I think you guys approved the go-to-town meeting for the fundraiser study.
For the, uh, that's Wellington Hill.
Now, the location study recently, you guys.
Yeah, no, that did not get approved. We asked for it, and it was turned down by Erica, and it hasn't come back up yet. No, we got turned down.
Yeah, it was discussed, but I believe they took no action on it. I thought it was gonna come up recently.
Yeah, and the Board of Finance took no action on it, and, uh... It looked like we're getting, oh, the money coming back from the school building committee.
Yeah, that's the discussion.
Would have, would have funded it, but, uh, we haven't gotten that far yet, and, uh... I'm trying to hit it from a different angle right now. We're, we're in discussions on, on what the best way to coordinate Wellington 1 and Wellington Hill at the same time. Making sure that we don't have overlapping programmatic.
Yeah.
The spending, uh, where it's not necessary, so we, we've got to put... The spending, uh, where it's not necessary, so we we've got to put together a more comprehensive plan.
So, I mean, that location study at this point is probably too far, so my only notes on that are essentially that I know they've been looking at these as a joint bond or direct project.
Right.
You know, a couple of years out, but I don't know if the.
We we know, we. I I think we're gonna have to give that idea up only because one needs a building so much faster.
Yeah, if you.
They need a building now.
If you were to pull the trigger today, they're over two years out.
Yes, yes, we understand that, uh, we we discussed that last night. We had a small working discussion to see how we could do this, essentially what we would unlike the school where you can build a school and then move the kids into it, we're we're gonna try to more like, uh, changing the tires on a moving car, we're gonna try to do things while things are moving and hopefully we don't get killed.
The discussion goes back many years, the, um, when the fire station started, probably ten years ago, Christina. We almost like board of finance, like before your selection, I think it started out and the end result was the board of finance said we can't afford two stations at once.
All right.
And, um, so they elected to start with Wellington one and that's when some engineering money came in, but then there's been kind of a whole pause on it now.
Now we can't pause.
Now the plan isn't to catch Wellington Hill up to us, but even then, can you afford two stations at once?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I I think Stuart, the plan was to catch Wellington Hill up and that plan kind of died with the mold. The mold in Wellington one killed the plan to catch them up, we gotta move you faster. Essentially. We can't have those people living on the trailer forever.
Yeah, and that's gonna be redesigned, you probably gotta go out for procurement for design services on that.
Oh, yeah, they, um, I believe Alex started talking to somebody, Alex and Ron started talking to somebody today. So I don't.
Do you have to, do you have to go out for public debt on that?
I don't know right off, I think they've got some.
Well, they have.
We have some money spent already with the local architect.
Yeah, I know.
So if we were to put it out to bid, again, you know, you I picture a new architect starting with a whole new plan and starting from dispatch again.
I I just don't know what you need to do from a procurement perspective, I mean, conceptually, right, what is Q A M, it's Q A M, right? I think they have, they would have the ability to bid.
Right.
Conservatively, I think, because they're familiar with the project, but it is the only project that this plan.
The one other wrinkles in the works is the, uh, building inspector came down to go check things out and he decided that the scope of the work just to reskin the building and put in new doors and windows is puts it over and above what you now need a new code.
Yeah, I I I heard that through Alex, I and then maybe the case.
That's what the building inspector told us.
From the design, whatever designer you get on board for that, I think there's probably a case to be made, but I think we're tangening and I apologize for that.
Yes.
But, you know, you might lose the argument, but I think there's probably an argument to be made, but from this perspective, I mean, yes, I think the location study and I think the town could have a good joint facility or a single building, but we're past that point.
You know, uh, which with the the study as it is, from the the mileage from one end of the town to the other, we're we're almost required to have two buildings, because even when that building went down, people at the north end were having trouble renewing their insurance. Till we moved the trailer back in.
Is that true?
I I had five, two or three citizens.
That's to be within five miles.
Call me up, scream at me.
A little bit, you're.
Okay.
A little bit of review.
That they couldn't renew their insurance until we move the trailer back up there.
I I, you know, it feels like there's opportunity, like it doesn't need to necessarily be an emergency operations center, it can be an apparatus bay. Uh, you know, like I think there are opportunities for maintaining existing stations or perhaps consolidating if they're, but I we're again, we're past that point. Um, in the in the urgency of the need, so. That'll let that year three eleven twenty-five, I think, is gonna shift into two separate projects realistically.
Yeah.
Very quickly.
Yeah, um. Yeah, well, that's a.
I mean, one of the only saving graces on this is that, uh, Tammy has told us that there's a fair amount of money to get from the state and and, uh, there's there's a fair amount from feds too, so.
Do you have a sense of what fair amount means?
I'm I'm thinking sixty percent.
And do you know, do we still think, like, where do we put it, the eleven five?
Uh, yeah, eleven five sounds sounds very reasonable, I was, I I thought it would be in someplace between six and twelve, but until we get the plans, we don't know. And the Fed and the state won't tell us until we have some plans.
Mm-hmm.
That eleven five is joint, right, like.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I my guess is section thirteen is gonna be three, three and a half.
I think just the addition that was planned based on three prices that we got, uh, was just under three. Some of those prices go back eight years.
Yeah.
It was just an addition, not including the bags.
Hey, Stuart, you're talking yourself out of a station. Just type of.
So, I I mean, there there are potentialism, I, again.
There's 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 potentially some savings when you're building the whole building as one unit, so you don't have.
Yes, I mean, there was challenges to.
Yes.
Marry up in addition to the existing building.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to reblock part of the roof because we have to increase the snow load because the shelf addition being taller than the roof and then you couldn't do a regular basement because you had to what they call bench it and leave the foundation for the way, there were a lot of challenges trying to marry up to that.
Yeah, and and by moving that building closer to the road, then you then you avoid a lot of that building, one building.
And honestly, building there, you might get, you're gonna get a better facility out of it.
Yeah.
You might get added perks in there, like vehicle exhaust, you know.
Yeah.
It's in that.
Instead of a vehicle exhaust system that blows into the sleeping quarters.
Yeah, exactly.
No, we actually, we got a FEMA grant for that too.
All right, there you go.
Okay.
Conservatively, though, I mean, I'd say it's probably a three and a half million dollar.
Yeah.
Line item, if this does get split, I mean, I I don't think you guys are gonna have any harder estimates of this year C I P, so.
No, and and what we really need is because we're gonna, we'd have to bond that. What what will that bond payment be on a annual basis? Um, that's what we, that's the number we need to put into the plan. And that's the number that we didn't know until very, very late in the process with this whole school thing. Um, I don't know.
Is this?
Why, that's hard math to do, but it is, I guess.
I mean, the, uh, the road improvements are about a three, three point one million dollar bond, are those actual values we captured?
No, it's not, that was just an estimate too.
Two on five.
So I I.
Was that for, uh, Village Hill?
Yeah, what if.
Schofield, so Schofield.
School field, yeah.
Yes, and Schofield is what's in this.
And then you get the Wusco Road Bridge to.
All right.
Yeah.
Like with that.
But it's showing a three point one bond and that that initial payment is two hundred and six thousand dollars, so if that, I I'm just trying to get a sense of.
Yeah, but that number.
But if that's a, if that's pulling.
That that number was literally us just saying, okay, on the twenty-eight million for the school, it ended up being three million, so what is that ratio? And so it's not real. Um, I booked, I don't know who we could invite in to to help us figure out.
The coastal example is the library, I believe was on a twenty-year bond.
Yeah, twenty.
And it's like it's got two, three years left on it or something like that.
Yeah.
And I believe the payment schedule on that started out around three hundred thousand per year and it's down around two twenty now.
Well, yeah, but what was it, what was the the bond amount?
About three million.
Straight up three?
Yeah.
So it's like ten percent?
Not not knowing what interest rates are nowadays and so on, but.
Yeah. Compared to what for fifteen years ago, seventeen years ago, whatever that.
Yeah, it would be really good, though, to have somebody who knows how to estimate that come in, I don't, I don't know who that would be.
I don't know who that would be, yeah, I mean, I I can, I I have resources for doing similar things for projects that kind of extrapolate that over, but I I I'm enough to be dangerous, but probably not enough to be accurate, because it's not like.
Right, right.
Um.
Um, okay.
Anyway.
All right, um. That's sorry, if I went to town, funding was completed to, uh, the REVAL, which is starting to come up now.
Yes, we just, that's going to town meeting at the same time, twenty-third, we came in at seventy-four. Something like that, we've they, we've picked a vendor and, uh, what was it, sixty-four? I I think one of, one of them was ten thousand dollars cheaper than the other one and was gonna do more for us as well as being cheaper, so it was a pretty easy choice.
Yep. And that's good, so that money is.
That money is.
Get used.
Yeah, I I think I think it came in at sixty-three and it's going to town meeting for sixty-five because there may be legal costs that aren't in there.
Okay. And then the only other thing on the town side was a facility study for municipal buildings that is in ARPA.
ARPA.
Which you just found out about.
I just found out, I guess, and there's not much on the bottom of that, so, uh, as far as the description of what it was meant by that fifty thousand dollars.
That's forty thousand dollars, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's fifty.
I think it's fifty, yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, there's, I was looking for the project attached to it, I don't think there is a project description.
Yeah.
I also don't think it's gonna get you too far.
I don't think so either, I was trying to, uh.
And that's what I think the original request was forty and then Erica came back and said to at ten, but, um.
Sure.
But I think she held on on doing anything until, uh, what was known about the school, until a school project, and then in a sense, whether it was gonna be included, whether or not the fire station needed.
Yeah.
Has anybody seen the, uh, plan that Mansfield got, I think Eric was kinda using it as a template?
No.
No.
But Mansfield did one for all of their town buildings and I think Eric was trying to kind of follow that and or talk to that vendor, because this came quite quickly in Google and say I want somebody to review my municipal buildings kind of thing, but it's similar to what the M Core study was done with the schools many years ago, but they continue to update it, is they brought in professionals to top of heating, ventilation, uh, structural roofs, you know, basically you drive away in all the big parts of a building, especially expensive parts, and what the current status is and what in their estimation would be doing in the future.
Yeah, I mean, the school has that ongoing right now for the existing schools, they have what I think is on the certainly low price, quite frankly, um.
But they've stuck with the same vendor for ten years or so, so that vendor knows kind of buildings inside and out, I think they do the bulk of the work.
But, um, yeah, but that's my point, I mean, it all this for vendors that knows them, because they're contractors, they're still on the committee. So if it's fifty thousand to cover how many municipal, you know, I just don't know how realistically, how detail, how much detail you're gonna get. Just don't live the useful lifespan, so, I don't know.
Yeah, I just want, I I went to visit with the town manager of Mansfield who was bitching that it was, his town hall was a repurposed, uh, grammar school and I almost slapped him.
They should be very happy you have it.
It's a really nice building that was completely restored before it was a town hall.
Yeah. Probably doesn't flood either.
Probably not.
So there's no action on that municipal building study then, because it's not out, we have nobody contracted service, we haven't seen anything for at least a year.
No.
No?
Till next year is what it, okay.
Yeah, we don't even know what, I I, you know, I'm not reading Erica's mind on that, I don't know what she had intended.
One of the, one of the contributing factors of of wanting that study was the library.
Mm-hmm.
Because all of these issues have come up at the library in the last couple of years and we wanted somebody to take a look and tell us which ones were most important to do. Because, um, can't do them all, all at once, so.
And this was going in step with a request for a facilities manager in town as well.
Yeah.
Which is something I want to bring up today too.
But, you know, Troy gets stuck, his group gets stuck doing some of the work, but, you know, it's not exactly his day-to-day assignment to keep track of all the buildings as well.
Hey, did the board of ed send a request to your office yet? They talked about it on their meeting, no, a couple of meetings ago, not last night, but the one prior saying they voted to send a letter saying they'd like the board's selection to consider a facilities manager jointly as a part of their need and they think it's something, quite frankly, this board could warrant requesting as well, uh, it's a gaping hole in.
Well, and the departments or department heads that run some of these buildings generally don't have the level of expertise needed to know what needs to be done in the short term or the long term and.
Right.
Either they defer projects, though it gets worse and you got a bigger project to fix or they fix stuff that perhaps isn't a priority, but it was an easy one to do. Um, in terms of having knowledge of, you know, structures and painting and electrical and so on and so on and so on. They, and I'm throwing anybody under the bus, but the fire departments, the senior center, uh, you know, buildings like that, Old Town Hall, I mean, typically the first like person got to stuck with the Old Town Hall. And it's like, well, you know, one, don't you have enough else to do? Um, and two, wouldn't it be good to have somebody knowledgeable in, you know, buildings like that, do we have to replace the windows, can we fix the windows?
Yeah, it goes beyond that too, it's on regular, understanding the regular services, maintenance, ma- maintenance of all the major pieces of equipment, H V A C systems, all that fun stuff, but the reality is the school has the schools have, even just the roofs and the H V A C projects, I mean, that's a, they have enough there that is a dedicated role and the town does, you know, be helpful. Um, I think it's something if you don't have it captured, it's definitely worth considering on the selection budget.
Oh, and.
To capture it if you haven't already, um, it's gonna be a critical priority sooner rather than later. If we really move forward on renovating new facilities or building new facilities, you know. It's it's honestly probably ultimately a department that's one of the one person, but if it's all town facilities, including the schools, the schools can help it around and keep that guy busy full time.
I I I would love to hire about six more people for town, there's not six more salaries, so, so.
No, I know, but they, I mean, that's the, that's that's the ground.
Yeah.
So.
Um, let's see. Uh, for the schools, we, um, we had earmarked forty thousand for this year for the plumbing projects, which is also gonna be at that town.
It's also at that town meeting, twenty, they've already spent twenty, there's twenty for each school, they spent twenty at hall already, I believe. And this is twenty for center, they have three projects and they're gonna be if if it doesn't cover it, they're gonna be making it up out of their operating budget.
Mm-hmm. And then the only other thing we put in the whole five-year plan for them was ninety-five thousand for for year two, um, for the ramp. No.
No, it hasn't, that's right, now the sidewalk.
The sidewalk, yes, that was last year, so the ramp is, um, is it is for next year, which would be this year we're gonna be planning for, it'll be in year one, assuming that they still think it's a priority for next year. Um, but then we did put that million dollars aside, um, knowing that there would be at a minimum, the roof project, um, but we know there's a whole bunch of things and I know because my email was going crazy today with all the requests getting submitted, that there is a lot of things, I didn't even look at them to see what they are, but, um, what they add up to, but.
It's it's not pretty, I don't, I I it wasn't last night's meeting, but the month prior, uh, Phil kinda did a rundown of where he was at a month ago and if there's, it's, it's not pretty. Um, the H V A C grant, the H V A C projects and the roof projects, the capitalizing grant, I think, are gonna have, it's gonna be a bond at some point. And we're gonna have millions of outlays just to be able to capitalize on that improvement. Um, it probably won't hit this year, but next year, it's, a million's not gonna cover the roofs.
Oh, yeah, no.
So.
And we did, we did put a million in each of the next five years in the plan, um, with, you know, either with a pay-as-you-go, um, idea in mind or as a bond payment on some sort of construction bond. So I don't know, I don't know what what we're gonna decide to do, but at least that structure is set up to potentially pay for some of it, so, um. Let's see, uh, Parks and Rec, they have their lighting and drainage project underway, it's it's technically not underway right now, it is getting designed by Carl. Um, they need to get, um, get that. Um get that done using, because it's ARPA money, it has to get done in the next two years, so, or spent. Which we don't, we, it needs to be done for us to pay for it, so it does need to be done, um.
On next two years, what was that date?
Uh it's two, so everything with the ARPA money needs to be appropriated by the end of this calendar year. And then used by the end of twenty, two more, two more years. What is this calendar, twenty six?
So the end of twenty six, so it's three years to expand it.
Yep. So, um but they're, they're uh, they're working on it, so. Uh and then the library, there were several maintenance and repair projects and we, we had it worked out so that there's one. Substantial project in each of the five years, um which, um the first one. I believe, let's see.
Sure, they're gutters.
Um. Yeah, that are the, are the, um, the gutter, so that hasn't been done yet. That was supposed to be done in spring and it hasn't been done. Um, the building envelope is supposed to get done in this coming year and then flooring in the community room. Year three, twenty thousand five hundred and exterior paint year four. Uh that's also an ARPA request. But that might not work if they don't get it done in that timeframe, so. We might wanna think about that funding source for that because. If we wait until then, they're gonna have to do it that year and if not, then we lose money, so. Uh and then interior paint in year five, so.
What, what's captured in the domain block on this for year two?
I think it was repointing some of the masonry where the foundation meets the masonry, um.
It's not gonna be.
Kind of like the drip edge on it and some of the flashing.
Yeah, it's a larger.
You think eighty two, well?
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna get that done for eighty, depending on the scope of the repointing and then that condition of base of the wall that's urgent because of the. Concrete, help me. Dally foundations, grumly foundations that uh.
Pirate?
Thank you. Concerned about that, I don't know. It's something that I don't need to be addressed and just patching it might do the job, but it's, it's a. It's a flashing issue, so I think there's a, there's a bigger, realistically, I think there's a bigger bill there whether or not they can. I I, that's something where the expertise, again, something like. Would help them kinda source out or scope out what the problem is and how to address it accurately.
Yeah.
What I have seen in other towns and town open, actually my father was obviously a permanent building committee. Which is basically there, there for years, you know, they're pointed by the cycle and kind of thing. But they're typically people that are in the trades or the business world that know about their stuff, that you have. You know, you get the right people, you know, mason, electrician, plumber and so on and so on. And if you don't have a facilities manager, uh they can kind of act as that. For you, and they did some big projects, uh building, you know, holding firehouse, building new high school, um. You know, they're the ones that kind of managed that from the start. Kind of thing, I googled building, permanent building committees in Connecticut, there aren't quite a few of them. What I wasn't able to find online was the scope of what they're destined to be dealing. But I think, you know, somebody needs to keep an eye on this stuff and have some level of expertise that's better than the people occupying these buildings.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I can't emphasize that enough, yeah, it's something that really should be considered.
I mean, I, I kinda think we need both, um, both as a staff person and a committee that. Because whoever you hire as a staff person, somebody's gonna have a different opinion. Then, because that's what, that's what ends up happening with all of these things, that whoever the building um superintendent is. Comes to us and says that they need this and this and this, and then we have opinions about, well, did you try this, did you look at this, how about this? That's just us and asking.
And a lot of that is that owner of the building, so to speak, is going back to a vendor, who we need, uh which. Is sometimes helpful, but sometimes it is, I'll put it that way.
Yeah, whether getting quotes or patching something or exactly a larger.
Yeah, but it's also.
Yeah.
Uh just a lot of opinions about how to do it, so. It's almost, our job really is just to figure out how to pay for it. It's not really how to do it, um we get into a lot of conversations about how to do it because. The numbers are, we just think, well, maybe you could save money if you did it this way or. If you, um but that's not really our job here, so. It'd be great if somebody else was doing that work and then we, we had some sense of, okay, that's what.
Yeah, the painting estimates on the library, huge number, my book. Uh I know it's a difficult building to paint with inside and out, but you know, is it? Eighty thousand, is it two hundred thousand, is it forty thousand? Uh we don't know, we hope that the quotes are getting, have somewhere scopes of work and. Have honest people bidding on them, um. But it's hard to get quotes that are good for one to two years. A lot of these C I P quotes that we see, they're eighteen months out at the earliest of, by the time you're doing the work.
Yeah, I mean, that is an important question, do we factor in any, we don't factor in any escalation.
No.
We factor what the request was.
Yeah, I guess if we, if it's pushed out, you know, from a, from our planning perspective for a town, you know, if somebody comes, okay, we've got this estimate. Here it is for painting of eighty thousand dollars, five years from now. That's a hundred thousand dollars just uh alone, like if we push it out, uh do we? How do we account for that and to maintain a, a realistic projection on?
Well, typically in the out years, you see more of a guess, you know, hey, in five years from now, what's a fire jump gonna cost, kind of thing. And you guess, and as it gets closer to your, you know, four, three, two, one. By year one, you have a, hopefully a solid quote of what's gonna at least happen in year one. And year two is a little better and so on and so on, so.
You look at year five, it's not gonna get, i- if you factor it in. Now, instead of being five times what your budget is, it's gonna be ten times what your budget is, so it really doesn't matter. It's, we still got, we're still gonna do twenty percent of the projects because that's what we'll be able to. But I mean, so I, I guess that raises a larger thing I struggle with here is how valuable is this exercise if we're not actually committing? If you're in a plan to address the item, it's how we're at this point where we have what's gonna be forty million dollars or thirty million dollars of projects. That need to be addressed.
Right, but if you.
It's a bomb.
You know, like it is, but here's, here's the deal, if, what you're doing is you're looking at project names out of your five. I- if, if you think you're gonna come up with a realistic number, you're probably not gonna happen, but what you're doing is you're planning out so you know that this. It's a storm in the distance that's coming toward you and, and you, and you're at least keeping it on radar.
But have, I, I, I guess that's my point, like, does this really keep it on radar, cause the reality is there's. A fire station, road improvements. Uh a major roof project at both schools and major HVAC project at both schools, all of which are gonna need to be addressed in the next three years realistically. And are gonna have significant funding effects on this. Do we, there's gonna be a bond in there for one, two, multiple projects, like. It, they're, there's, we're at the point where deferring this is, is really not viable for many of these and it really, it's gonna be a hurt in the short term. But I, you know, unfortunately, I think some of it could have been avoided if there was a million dollars being put in. Over the last ten years, like a ten years would, you know, uh would avoid much of this heartache.
He said the mystical dollar amount that's been in C I P started over twenty years ago. And they had, and I don't know what the exact figure was, say it's just five hundred thousand.
It was.
Some years, it wa- you know, the sky was falling in coordination, it was presenting it and they spent nothing. Jolly good was defer everything a year, uh and then come to find out the world didn't come to it and they could have funded it if they wanted to. They've done some adjustments the last few years, they tried to do like, kind of like a cost of living. Uh adjustment.
Which we should have been doing all along.
Yes, you're absolutely.
We should be up to like three million dollars if we had been doing that all along.
United kind of correlation on these, so that cost of living is basically being watched by projects by years.
Right.
Yes, um so we certainly never got a, you know, ahead of the game, you know, Schofield Road, Village Hill. They've been on the plan for twenty to thirty years and not a single thing is been done about it. Obviously frustrated for the people that live or travel on those roads, but to come up with, oh, we need a, you know, two million dollars for Village Hill, that's just. From the bridge on up to Pinecrest, it's like, oh geez, you know, it's like, how can you do that, um? And so the wind, then of course the school thing kind of really changed things that, you know, a lot of things were deferred for two, three, four years while they were in the process of. Do we build a school or don't we, and that answer came out, so it sounds like, how much money can we throw at the schools now? They had all these projects piled up, you know, that they didn't wanna invest in, but they thought they're gonna rearrange the schools and. Uh that's not happening, uh, except roof and ventilation and.
Yeah, those are, those are the critical ones that are gonna come screaming, um. I mean, you'll see HVAC in two years is the major impact probably, uh roof field, see you soon, um.
But one of the cautions that learned from Stafford is they tried to do a bond a few years ago. And they included a new firehouse, a lot of sewer repairs and school repairs, it was uh. Don't put me in a price, it was like eight or ten million dollars, it was a significant bond they were trying to do, and they lumped them all together, got shot down. They all lost, and so in terms of the sales pitch through the board of finance and C I P and the selectmen. Is do you try to present these one at a time and sell them on their own merits? Or do you lump them together for the hopeset, okay, the school people will vote yes because they like the school stuff, that'll pass the other two. Fire department likes the fire department stuff, so they'll vote yes to try to get the other two as well, uh ultimately it needs to get through the voters. Um and so it's a, oh, we need a three million dollar bond, you know, we can use a ten million dollar bond, um but it's gonna pass.
Um I mean, it does, for that, I'd detect some uniformity of mission and mindset uh between this for the board of selectmen, board of finance to really like.
And the voters.
And, well, but if the town got behind and everybody got a unified voice saying, yes, this is really an urgent priority now, at least. You know, that it's a ground to, it's, it's at least the leg to stand on, um and presents an argument. You know, that's relaying the importance of this stuff to the, to, to town, that is really the critical need, but there's.
You know, I would suspect ninety percent of the taxpayers in town don't care about the school, Village Hill.
Yep.
Cause they don't drive up it, it's like, I don't afford that road, I don't care, uh and. You can't exactly fault them for that, but on the hot, other hand, can't let roads turn back to dirt again, uh but there's some people like that.
It's gonna make fun of.
It is every year.
Well, so, so that's where we're at, that's what all of, um, all the projects are. Oh, there's a couple more things, there, there's this uh. Uh conservation commission.
Uh yes, they, they were in my office the other day. Uh they're looking at a piece of land that's right up.
Are you supposed to say where?
I don't know. I, I tell you where if I knew, I looked at the small, I, I looked at the map where that map is on the big map, I'm not really sure. But there's, there's a triangle that it, it, it's like a. Taken out of a piece of land that we already own, so it, it'll fill it all up, they, they told us where it was something.
About that, uh, yeah, they mentioned that on board of finance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's, um.
But there's, there's.
To make sure that it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it looks like the, it's a landlocked piece of land that was bought as if it had uh access and it doesn't. So at some point, they're gonna have to cut a road and they haul out all the buildings and trash and stuff and then redo. The forest so that it's not a permanent access from Ashford.
Okay.
I did not know we owned a piece of Ashford, the town of Willington owns a piece of Ashford, which is a little odd, but who I know.
So we're gonna have to pay taxes there.
No. I don't think we do.
No, probably not.
It's a very small slipper.
Um, the other thing is the regulation and ordinance, uh codific- codification or codification?
It's codification.
Um, that, that's getting covered by ARPA and that is in progress, so, um. So, I, I will say too, there is a little bit of ARPA money left, we don't know how much exactly. Um, there's a playground um proposal in for ninety thousand dollars into ARPA. Which is not on this plan in any of the years, but if it were in year one, I would, or year two. Um, I'd say it would make sense to do that, um. Just to like.
Playground for at the schools or?
Um, at center school is the resurfacing of the playground.
Okay.
Yeah, it's wood chips now, they're probably wanna do some sort of.
Yeah, and then the other one was a, uh the gutter project at the library, which um is in here, in year one. Um, oh no, sorry, they did get the money for that, um but they just haven't done the project. So, and then the paint was the other one, so.
Talk about that at the locker.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's where we're at. And we'll see what the requests are. You know, the, these, this is just a general idea of what could be coming in year two, but there's always new stuff. And there's always some things that get pushed out.
But you don't wanna have it happen, somebody to walk in and say, I need this two hundred thousand dollar truck this year. I've never asked for it before, but I need it in year one now, and that's, those are the kind of things you want to avoid and it just. Totally destroys your planning process for trying to spread the money around here, there and everywhere.
Yeah. You could say the same for fire department too. We need a new firehouse and we need it now, in year one.
Well, that's kind of.
Something goes back about eight years, but yeah. Different thing to month though.
Yeah.
Look for me about that, it's, I think there was text in the beginning of this thing about trying to move away from lease to home.
Yes.
On equipment, how, what is, what is the strategy?
Um.
That's underway on.
Well. So we've done a couple of things in the last couple of years where we've paid for half with, um.
Twelve's having money to pay for half.
Yeah, yeah, um. But I, I, I think too, if, if we truly are gonna buy a new truck every two years. Then we should just be, just like we do with a reval, just put money in and save it for. Um, which is another thing that maybe Troy should recommend, um.
But that also, I mean, yes, if that's the case, but it would be nice to have some sort of a replacement schedule, anticipated replacements.
Right.
Rather than just say, this is what we bought when we bought it, you know, like the, the visual graphic you have. Christina is great, it's helpful, but it doesn't like.
Right.
It, it doesn't help understand how that.
Right, no, it just helps, uh helps us understand like, oh, he's talking about that green truck.
Yeah.
That's all rested.
What that then?
Yeah, that's, that, um, but yeah, it doesn't help us to, to plan when it's gonna be. And we did go from having three trucks to having five trucks now in the last like four years, so. Oh, wait, do we have five trucks?
Yes, I think we do because more of them were broken right before the store.
Right.
I'm not sure I count that y'all one as a truck, that was, that was a freebie that's helping out, but.
There's, where one of them went to uh scrap metal, I'm not sure which one.
Well. If, if we have five, five trucks, five for, for the plowing. And they need to re- replaced every ten years and you need a new truck every two years, it's that simple. So I don't know why we don't have a truck now on the plan. So we should get some.
Don't give me any ideas.
No, no, because we.
Cause I think one year they did come in off, or after C I P went through, I think they came. Is that, is that think one year they did come in off, or after CIP went through, I think they came in and said we need a truck now. Not next year, so they, like, two in one year or something like.
Yeah, yeah, something like that, I don't know. I don't know, but that's, that's what we need to do.
Um, when you do the meeting schedule, are you gonna assign whatever agents? To whatever nights?
Yeah, I'll, I have to contact them all, make sure that they're available.
Didn't know if the school needed a little more time based on their, if they're still scheduled, what figures.
Right, right, so yeah, I'll put them towards the end.
Or usually conservation commission and library, a little more streamlined.
School's gonna be interesting, cause they have that study that I don't have the timing of, like, Phil's put together a list of his projects and you have some Friar, not, you had like Friar's study numbers. From what I understand, I, this is only from watching a meeting a month ago, but, um, the Q A and M study, I don't know what the timing of that is and that's really gonna inform or probably blow up. You know, the consolidation or the, the grouping of all of those projects. I, I just don't, I don't know what the time, Phil will be able to speak to it, I'm sure. So what you're getting now doesn't have that that updated assessment. You know, grouping of projects and recommendations for ten year strategy for addressing all of them, yeah, I don't believe.
I'll take it for the grain of salt, but it's more information than we had last year. It's something, so. All right, let me look at the agenda, cause so that, that was our review of last year's plan and where we're at. What was it? Oh, that was it. Motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
All in favor?
The men start in ten minutes or something.
Were you recording?
Yes, I was. Oh, do I, I can, uh, stop recording.